Meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17 and at facebook.com/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/planningcommission. To make a public comment or to join the meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Provo City Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email them at dspublichearings@provo.org. That is signed by Dave Anderson, Planning Commission Chair, on January 28. And we are ready to move forward then. Robert, you're in charge of the discussion about the process.
Yes. So it's good to be with all of you. I feel like it's been a long time since I've been to Planning Commission, so hope all of you are well. And I am really hoping to have a kind of a robust conversation with all of you tonight about our general plan. I wanted to give you a little bit of update of where we are and some of the next steps, and then kind of get some feedback from all of you. And I even have a little homework assignment for you at the end. So don't you love being on the Planning Commission and we pay you so well and make you do so much work? So this is just a little graphic. Most of the PDFs that I'm sharing with you tonight have come from our consultant design workshop. I have to say right off the bat that we're really pleased with the quality of work that they've done and being able to interact with them. We feel like they're doing a really great job for us. Also want to mention and specifically give a shout out to Brian Henry. He is helping us with a working group in addition to his planning commission responsibilities. So we're hoping that kind of both of us will be able to help out with this update tonight and then give you all the information that you need and then get some good feedback from you. So where we're at, this is phase one of everything that has been going on. We've selected a consultant and the consultant has spent an inordinate amount of time going through all of our documents and plans and lots of demographics and population information, all of that kind of stuff to help us understand everything that's existing of Provo, all the information that we have. And we're kind of up here in this, starting in the phase two section where we have met with a working group already, gotten some feedback, and now we're kind of to the stage of doing a little bit of synthesizing and developing a vision and different themes rather than specific chapters. We're just kind of working on that part. And where we're going is starting like March through August, developing a revised future land use map, additional community engagement, and then on through there. Phase three, which is where we hope to be by August, is kind of to the implementation and adoption stage. So you will be hearing a lot more from us in the coming months as far as reviewing drafts, reviewing even kind of thematic elements and things like that. These are some slides just from the consultant actually talking about what they have learned so far. So they've gone through all of these documents and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Most of us probably know this information, but I think it's important as we move through the general plan process. Talking about wages, economic situation, most of you know that Provo does have the lowest median household income in the county. It's actually quite a bit lower than the county average and most of our neighbors. That has a lot to do with what we call episodic poor, and that's a five dollar phrase to mean students. And we don't expect them to be poor forever. One of the issues though is that they're poor while they're here and then they move somewhere else and are no longer poor. So that's not helping our economic situation much. But they are spending a great deal of money in our city and they are a huge economic asset to us. Just their numbers pull those specific demographics down a little bit. Population growth of Provo has been a little bit slower than what the county and the state has experienced. Again, I think this is a lot to do with our student population and situation, but it looks like we added about 6,400 people from 2010 to 2020 and bringing our current population to about 116,000 and change. This is interesting that MAGS predicting us to grow by about 33% over the next 20 years. So population by 2040 is expected to be about 155,000. Housing. Housing is a real hot button issue in our community lately, entire state basically. These are some interesting numbers. I won't go into all of them and I will provide these slides to all of you at the end of this presentation, but this is one that I wanted to bring out just a little bit. As far as housing demand, the information that our consultant has found says that the city needs to add about 12,000 housing units by 2040 to cover that population growth. This is averaging about 1,000 units a year for the next 20 years. Bill, do you remember how many we added last year? Melissa, do you remember? I don't think we're at 1,000 a year. So that's just something to consider. Mobility. Provo is actually a little bit better as far as commute times go than our neighbors in the rest of the county and in the state. People average about 18 minutes to their job, wherever that is. Economy. Education is probably the largest industry by employment. We have a great asset in the educational facilities that we have in the city. And then second greatest industry was professional scientific administration and waste management. That's interesting. So this is more the meat that I wanted to get into tonight. A few, well, actually a couple of months ago, on December 10th, we held a community, an online open house, basically going through a lot of different questions and invited so many different members of our community as wide ranging as we could. The pandemic is a bit of a double edged sword. We can't meet together, but sometimes that increases our capacity to have more people participate. So in this one meeting, we had over 100 people attend that and respond in the meeting. And then the information in the questionnaire extended out for another 10 days. We had over 400 responses, over 1,200 people that visited the website that it was on. And I just wanted to go over a little bit of information that we got from that. 12% of the people that responded were, have been here for less than five years, but a little less than half have actually been here for more than 20. Don't pay too close attention to this map because this says West Center Street and this says East Center Street, but we know that's not correct. But you can see kind of the breakdown of where people responded from. And that actually breaks a little bit along some population lines as well. 71% of the respondents lived north of Center Street. That's a little than what the population distribution is, but it follows it pretty This was a really fun activity that we had our respondents participate in. They were able, we wanted to really get down to more values based questions rather than specific one answer type of thing. And so we asked them, we had five different choices of pictures in Provo. And the respondents could choose the one that they felt most represented the Provo that they know and love and view that as a postcard that they would send to a friend or relative or something and just explain what they would really, what they would tell that person about Provo. We had a picture of the Provo River Trail and the overwhelming majority of the respondents, both at the meeting and through the online survey afterward, shows that as what they felt represented Provo the most to them. And then these are just some respondent answers that we received back. Lots of focus on recreational opportunities within the city. That's very, very important, something that keeps coming up more and more. These are some plan element questions that we've received back. So transportation planning should focus on the following, improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion, improving biking mobility, walking, those types of things. What type of housing is needed in Provo? This was an interesting question because we wanted, we wanted them to think a little bit differently and a little bit more personally. So the question that we actually asked was what, what housing concerns do you think your children and or grandchildren will be facing as they enter the housing market? So 41% wants to see more single family homes. 24% are comfortable with additional townhomes and condominiums. Housing affordability or attainable housing is a really important concept that kept coming up. Larger single family homes with larger lots. That's something that we hear all the time, right? But then also the deregulating of accessory dwelling units in different neighborhoods. Recreational needs, I guess can see those there. And then important things about Provo's history. Overwhelmingly, the respondents were interested in preserving agriculture, making sure that our heritage is still part of our future. Oh, architecture, not agriculture. Agriculture is important too. So these are just some additional questions, but I wanted to come and kind of focus a few minutes on these types of things. So this was kind of how the respondents' questions were broken down as far as key findings. So strengths, sense of community, access to trails and open space, BYU, the mountains, the airport, it's bike friendly, we have access to public transit, existing agriculture, there it is, and our existing neighborhoods. Those are what people viewed as the strengths of Provo currently. Weaknesses, some things that we need to work on, some things that we might have some vulnerability. Air quality always came up as number one. Downtown parking and around campus, the mall, lots of people are really concerned with seeing lots of vacancy there. A grocery store in somewhere in West Provo, helping alleviate that situation. Division in the community, I thought this was really interesting that people caught on to the idea that there's a, there's like an undercurrent of discontent between students, local people that have been here for a while, newcomers, and kind of that faith and politics situation, and people viewed that as a concern that we should address. Housing affordability and in conjunction with that the rental supply of housing, loss of retail to Orem, and then not enough high paying jobs here in Provo, that there's a bit of a commuter culture here. Opportunities. People are open to increasing density to address the environmental and traffic concerns that were identified, air quality, those types of things. Mix of housing types is something that people would be comfortable with and felt like Provo could expand on. Always improving our trail and park network, and then more mixed use types of developments. And then threats. These are things that people felt were most concerning and should be adjusted. And some of these are ideological, some of these are real. So population growth, some people view that as a, as a real threat to our quality of life in Provo. The fear of change, loss of open space, agricultural space as we develop more, and then increased environmental impacts from that growth, and then maintaining family values, new mix of people, and then financial impacts that the city might have. So I wanted to pause here early quickly and actually have a little bit of discussion and just open it up to everybody, but I might actually call on you, depends on how this discussion goes, but I wanted you to think personally about Provo in regards to strengths, weaknesses, threats, opportunities, and just share your thoughts. What do you, what would you categorize your personal view as what Provo has as a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, and a threat? I'll just open it up to everybody.
You don't have to raise your hand, you can just jump in.
Yeah, just come off mute, want to see your faces and just jump in.
I'll make one response. And I, I watched the meeting on the 10th and participated, so I'm sure some of my comments are in this, but as we talk in terms of opportunities and the mix of housing types and increased supply, I kind of feel like there's a little bit of NIMBYism in that, that the concept is great until it gets to specific neighborhoods. And so that is also one of our threats, that we've got some concerns there, and we certainly don't want to negatively impact neighborhood value. And I think that there may need to be some, how would I put it, some discussion and maybe advertising, marketing that would kind of help people to understand that mix of housing types does not necessarily mean that value gets lowered.
Great comment. Great comment.
Okay. I'll actually jump on that a little bit. I think that, you know, over and over again, we see this criticism of Provo's air quality, but anytime anyone tries to implement things that will change that, there's so much resistance, like we saw all of the resistance that happened to the public transit, which would significantly improve our air quality. There was resistance to the addition of bike lanes. We know that making areas higher dense and closer to that public transit will help and improve that, but people are just so resistant to these ideas. So I also attended this meeting and the whole time, it just was really frustrating to see people want more single family homes and more giant properties, but then also want less traffic and better air quality because something has to give somewhere.
Good point. Thanks, Ally. That's great.
I would totally agree with that assessment, Ally. As we know, every time we have a proposal for new development, if it's considered too dense, people go crazy with the NIMBYism. And they were going crazy over the BRT when I first moved here in 2013. And hopefully that's calmed down a bit. But I think the other thing that we have a problem with is that most people do commute to elsewhere, and I would, I would venture a guess that a lot of people that live south of us commute through us to jobs north of us. So that just compounds the air quality issue for Provo. It's not just our local traffic, but it's also that pass through traffic that we get morning and evening. And I know there's a lot of talk about with our new administration, air quality, and other environmental concerns. I will say quite honestly, I've been here for seven, going on eight years now, and the air quality would be one of the hot topics that would make me leave because I don't want to breathe, I mean, it's bad. I used to notice it only in the winter time, and now it's all year round. There's air quality alerts all year round. The other thing I'll touch on, because I'm fairly new compared to most of you, to Provo and Utah, was that there is a cultural divide here. Because most of the state is of one persuasion politically and religiously, and people that are not of that persuasion are considered outsiders. And I encounter it on a daily basis when I interact with neighbors. It's kind of a weird dynamic if you don't come from this place or this culture. So I think in the long term, that is a threat to Provo. Because it is socially and economically sort of excluding a swath of people for not fitting I do agree with the strengths that we have, the airport, although that could impact air quality over time as it becomes more utilized and expands. The outdoor access to recreational facilities is outstanding. It's one of the reasons I came here. It's physically beautiful here, and I haven't lived too many places where I could say that. So I think that is a huge asset. I guess the, and this is something Dave Anderson and I have talked about in the past, the situation with attracting, for economic development, attracting businesses, retail services, we are behind there. Dave affectionately likes to say, Spanish Fork landed this retailer and you didn't, but he has a point. And I'm not quite certain why that is, if it's the demographics, if it's the household median income factor. I'm really not sure, and I would imagine economic development might have a better idea about what that means for us, but that's one more thing that forces people to drive or commute, to go out to eat or to go shopping or, you know, I see Orem has attracted a ton of retail, and I don't know why that is, but it might be interesting to find out. I'll stop there.
All really great points, Deborah. I think that the median income is probably the strongest driver leading to those situations where, you know, if you're a retailer and you have a list of communities that you could possibly locate to, and several of them, the average median income is about $70,000, and then there's Provo that's about $50,000, $49,000. It is overcoming that episodic poor situation in our demographics is something that we really need to look into and really need to hone in on for our economic development parts. Great responses. Brian?
Yeah, a question on that, Robert. It seems interesting that, you know, the average income of, say, American Fork is at 70,000, and yet there's only 24,000 people there. Where in Provo, we're 116,000 people, and yet our median income's 53. Is there a way to look at that without the students to see what the permanent, permanent income?
We're figuring that math out. The math exists and we're figuring it out.
Yeah, because it just seems to me like, yes, we may have lower income, but I think if you were to look at it, you know, per capita, do we have just as many people here in Provo that make good money that would be in a Lehigh or an American Fork or Spanish Fork? Do we have just the same quantity of high income earners? I just wonder if that number is just a misleading thing.
Yeah, are there like some outliers in American Fork that really drag up that median? I can wonder.
Yeah. I think, I think consider as well as that, just because they're, they might be considered episodic poor or in a lower income bracket, that doesn't mean that they're not consumers, right?
Right. I was gonna say, our students are not necessarily as poor as they look on paper. I mean, a lot of them have nicer cars than I do.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, you know, they're getting funding from outside that is coming into this community. It just doesn't show up in the paperwork.
Yeah. And so I think that's, that's one of the ways that I think that the data doesn't necessarily tell the entire story.
Right.
We need to find ways to tell the whole story.
I guess another question along with that, Robert, is when Ancestry left, that was really surprising to me. What is it that would cause someone like Ancestry to move to Lehigh, which I can't imagine why anyone would want to move their business to Lehigh, instead of downtown Provo? Like what is that draw? What is that Lehigh is doing?
I actually know the answer.
Lisa, go ahead. Let's hear your answer.
In that specific case, I'm fairly certain it was the CEOs that lived in the northern end that were commuting down. So when they had the option to, to move to a place that was closer to where they lived, and obviously, most of their employees were on the northern end of the valley. So for everyone, it was a better choice for them than it was to keep it down there.
I think that really leads into that the northern end of the valley has a geographical advantage in that it's easier to pull from both valleys.
Okay, yeah, I could see that.
And I would love to see, I would love to have us increase our commercial and retail. At the same time, I do not want us to turn into Orem State Street, anywhere near that. And so that's, that balance, I guess, is what the Planning Commission is supposed to help develop, but that's one of our big challenges. Go ahead, Lisa.
It's okay. I don't need to elaborate.
I think, Laurie, I think one of the benefits Provo has that other cities don't is downtown. And how can we capitalize on downtown that is a space unlike any other? You know, can we attract, you know, I don't want, you know, a bunch of big boxes coming to Provo, but there are urban versions of like, say, Target or Kohl's that have an urban typology that isn't the four parking spaces per thousand square feet. They had one in Denver when I did some studying there, they installed one in Albuquerque right before I left. It's an urban format target. How can we attract things like that to enhance our downtown that would then bring in more restaurants? It would bring in just more vibrancy in a space that nobody else can do.
I like what Brian just said. I feel like capitalizing on what we already have that's good.
I like what Brian just said. I feel like capitalizing on what we already have that's good may be our economic strategy in some cases. Because there are a lot of strengths. And so instead of trying to be somebody else or fill a niche that we're not suited for, that's a, that's a good point.
Absolutely.
I would love it if our downtown was bigger, I guess is what I mean. Like, I love all of the restaurants down there, and I love walking down there. And, I mean, all of this is pre-pandemic, but like, the art walk and all the things. Like, I would love to see that area just thrive.
Great comments. Anything else that comes to mind?
I'm wondering about First North. And building on what Ally says, it seems like there's a lot of potential along 100 North. And we ought to be able to at least make our downtown maybe three blocks wide instead of just a street. And so I would like to see that encouraged, because I think there's, there's stuff there.
Good point.
Wasn't there a plan to make 100 South a pedestrian corridor?
Still in the plan.
Still in the plan.
And I think that with the, with the continued as the city center building finishes up, I think that you'll see more of that incorporated into 100 South. More of that plan come to fruition. Then, in addition to that, you know, we have the city center, the current city center block that's going to redevelop as well. So I think there are, there are good things coming. It's just the waiting part, right? Yeah, First West is a walking coordinator, or corridor, pedestrian corridor as well. How do you feel, how do you all feel about that idea of population growth as a threat?
I mean, I I think I feel a lot of what Deborah mentioned earlier. It's just, in some ways, people in this community are super exclusive and focused on quote-quote maintaining family values, which this isn't being broadcast, right? Like, let's just be explicit about what that means. It's anyone who's different from their nuclear families is someone their Mormon nuclear families is someone they're really threatened by. So I think population growth just plays into a lot of that. They have their single-family home with their nuclear family, with their neighbors who are all in their ward, and anything that changed. And I'm not saying the whole town is like that, but there definitely is a subset of the population that I think feels that way.
Okay.
I don't think.
Yeah, Robert, Robert was here and and he just brought up a really good point that everybody, there's kind of a consensus of disliking population growth unless it's their family. And then we have to make sure that there's room for the family, which, interestingly, in Provo, Utah County, actually, that seems to be where the larger percentage of our population growth occurs from. It's just the natural process rather than a huge amount of in-migration. So our population growth is coming from those nuclear families that then become even larger, right?
And there are, there are nearly 8 billion people on the planet now. You might want to rethink that.
Some of the, back to your original question, Robert, I think some of the the concern about that idea is I have no problem with growth in Provo. I welcome it. My neighborhood has tripled in size since I moved here. And I love the diversity that comes from it. The different housing types, the different people from different backgrounds, different incomes. It's fantastic. What happens is when that growth comes unchecked without, without I wouldn't even say without rules, because there's lots of rules on the books. It's without the maintenance. If we grow faster than we are capable of maintaining, whether that be with proper utility hookups or with not enough staff to manage whatever needs a city has, that's when it gets out of our control. And that's when we that's when we end up losing sight of our objectives, maybe. I welcome growth. I think it's great. And there are people who haven't had good experiences, and so they are even more afraid. But I think it comes with the management of it. And so if we can maybe predict management perffuls that might happen as growth happens in different areas, economic and otherwise, then maybe we'll be better prepared for the growth that we are happy to have.
Great. Provo is one of the slower-growing, Provo is one of the slower-growing cities in the county.
That's mostly just because we don't have that much land, right, comparatively?
We have a lot of constraints, and some of that, some of our neighbors do not have. I really appreciate, pardon? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one more thought on that. I don't think this is an issue specific to Provo. I was actually, I discovered an issue brewing in Tooelela County. There's a group up there that is trying to stop any development over one acre, one unit per acre. And they're trying to push for two and a half to five for the entire county. So I don't think this is unique to Provo. And I agree with Lisa's assessment. If, if we grow smart and we don't just haphazardly just throw development willy-nilly everywhere, I think we'll eliminate most of the frustration and most of the fear that people have. But I think it's just a natural thing. People are fearful of change. It's kind of a built-in function of our subconscious. And so I don't know that we're ever going to fully get away from that. But usually, when the change comes, most people are all like, oh, that wasn't so bad.
I agree with that. I thought that was really good. I appreciate your guys' input on that, and I've written a few notes. I want to make sure that you have time for a break before, before your official meeting starts. But I just wanted to show you quickly, as we move into one of your, the homework that I'd like to have you do. During the meeting, if you attended, there were some questions that auto-generated word clouds. And so this is one of the word clouds that was generated as far as like, community values. The bigger the word, the more often it was said. Things like that. Sustainable was by far and away the word that kept coming up and up and up and up. And I thought that was really interesting. And if you look at the words in this word cloud, there's a lot of interconnectedness. And the values that people seem to really share were very interconnected in this idea of sustainability. But our consultant, at this point, we're really trying to hone in on this idea of a vision for the community. And these are value words from the Provo community that came up frequently in the respondent sheets and in the open house meeting. Sustainable, safe, family-inclusive, community, diverse, walkable, growth, density, welcome equal, open space. And then our consultant kind of categorized these. The purpose of this homework assignment. And this is what I want you all to take a few minutes and, and maybe do. And then if you could just email this back to me at your earliest convenience, I would really appreciate it. So we want you to write down your own vision statement for Provo. What, what you really feel. And nobody's going to read your response as far as calling you out and saying, Lisa, why did you write that? But we really, really want to know how you feel and what you think it is. So the first one is Provo is. And just what, what you think Provo is. And then in 2040, Provo will be. And then we get there by, we will get there by and then the next part. I'm going to send you a quick email that has this information. If you could just email that back to me at your earliest convenience, I'd really appreciate it, because we really want to have the input of the planning commission in this process. You are a key player in how we develop a revised general plan for our city. Our goal for the general plan is to be the, for the general plan to be the preeminent guiding document of our city. And making sure that it has the right vision, the right values, is probably the most important part of this. So we want to make sure that you're involved. Just to give you a couple of next steps. The next things that we are working on are some strategic focus groups. Working on that. And then further synthesis of all of these values, vision, really finalizing that vision statement and those values. And then starting the process of really pulling the document together. So 5:42. So that's, that's kind of where we're headed. And hopefully, that was an okay overview. I appreciate the, all of the help and guidance that you've given so far. Any last thoughts? Any, anything that we should be working on that we missed? Or anything?
Did you want our input on those committee, those subcommittees that you were looking for people on? Or were you just telling us that's something you're working on?
Suggestions, I would welcome them. Yep. So I'll send that out to you. And then if you have any questions during this whole process, you can call me, email me, text me anytime. Okay, and I'd be happy to talk with you. We can, I've been into smoothie chats lately, so we could go do a smoothie chat. Thank you, guys. I appreciate all that you're doing. And we'll give you a little break before your main meeting.
Thank you, Robert. So everybody back here so that we can start again at 6:00. Bye.
Bye.
February 10, 2021, Planning Commission Meeting. I'm going to start by reading a COVID Public Meetings Act related statement. In accordance with Utah's Open and Public Meetings Act, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with an anchor location such as the council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. The World Health Organization has classified Novell coronavirus disease as a pandemic. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. Utah is currently subject to the Utah Public Health Order 2020-26, which limits the size of public gatherings and which requires people to wear face coverings and follow social distancing guidelines. Utah County is currently listed as having a high level of coronavirus transmission. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the council chambers and other meeting rooms. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. Meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17 and at facebook.com/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/planningcommission. To make a public comment or to join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Provo City Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email them at dspublichearings@provo.org. Okay, so for tonight, I believe the agenda was set up with seven items on it. Items two and three have been canceled. And with that, we will go ahead and do a roll call. We'll start with Ally Jones. And we'll come back to Ally. We'll go to Deborah Jensen.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Russell Phillips, no conflicts.
Thank you. Lisa Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Commissioner Urquaga?
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Commissioner Henry?
Ryan Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knutson?
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
I'm Dave Anderson. I have no conflicts. And back to Commissioner Jones. Is she here with us?
I am. Ally Jones, no conflict.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ally. Okay, great. We're just going to go ahead and dive in into item number one. The Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to remove the Design Review Committee requirement from Section 14.33A. Point four, excuse me, point 040 of the Provo City Code. And from there, we'll turn it over to Brandon Larson.
All right, Brandon Larson, Development Services Staff. I've got a little, this is a relatively straightforward request, I think. Back in June of last year, the Provo City Council adopted the Critical Hillside Overlay Zone with its, with its numerous requirements. And after, after the adoption of that, of that set of requirements, staff went through the process of reviewing a development application. And after reviewing that development application, staff recommends the elimination of subsection 3, 1433A, 40 subsection 3, the requirement for development or design review requirements. And I'll get into that in just a moment to explain why. But just briefly, I'm, in this, in this presentation, I'm going to, to explain the proposal and briefly address the, the powers and duties of the Design Review Committee and explain why the requirements for design review is, isn't necessarily helpful or necessary in, as we have it set forth. So subsection 1433A 43 requires any residential or non-residential development and any main buildings to go to the DRC for review. And that's, that can be a little bit of a challenge. As like I said, as we started reviewing the recently proposed development in the CH zone, we realized that requiring all residential developments to go to, to the DRC for review can actually, may not be super necessary or helpful. And again, I'll get to that in just a moment. I want to point out the powers and duties of the, kind of talk a little bit about the powers and duties of the DRC which are established in 1404A 20 of the city code. The powers and duties are pretty straightforward. It basically says in that, in that section that the DRC will review and make design recommendations for buildings and uses subject to project plan approval and design review. I think one of the keys there is when a use or building requires project plan, that's a pretty good indication that needs to go to the DRC. And I'll point out that the plaques are one of those uses for like single-family homes. That's not a use that goes to, typically goes to the DRC. So another point that I'd make is in, in section 1437, 1437 200 of the city code or 280, design review criteria set forth. And that criteria identifies what uses needing to go through the design review process. Three-unit or greater multifamily structures, projects with groupings of more than two-family structures and then non-residential structures requiring project plan approval. So you notice that single-family developments aren't, aren't listed there. So project plan, when we, when we review plaques for single-family developments, project, DRC is not one of those things that, that is included simply because it's not easy to do design review and there's no buildings or landscape to consider. So an example of when a residential development goes through the, through the project plan or goes to DRC is when it, when a project plan is required, like a condo application. Condo application has buildings that have architecture and landscaping and so then the DRC has something to look at. So this proposed amendment, of course, just eliminates the, the requirement. The reason why we're, we're proposing to eliminate the, the requirement in its entirety is because there's other sections of the city code, namely 1404A, that sufficiently, in the staff's minds, sufficiently provide for when an application should go to the city, go to the Design Review Committee for review, for design review. So again, we believe that the code, the existing code requirements outside of the one proposing to eliminate already sufficiently provides for when we should take something to the DRC. So with that, I would recommend to the Planning Commission that they recommend approval to the city council of this proposed amendment.
Mr. Larson, thank you. So for me, it kind of distills like this, that a typical subdivision proposal with lots for individual, single-family homes does not go to the Design Review Committee.
Correct.
But that the requirement is a little bit different currently for subdivisions with individual lots for single-family homes in the critical, excuse me, Critical Hillside Overlay Zone. So you're just making it uniform with other subdivisions in the city.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We're trying to, yeah, make it consistent throughout. I think there, there are a couple of, I did find one or two other zones that may have similar problems like the CH zone. But if you look at the powers and duties section of the city code, I think the intent's pretty clear that it's for buildings and uses that are subject to project plan approval. So, and, and single-family developments are not subject to project plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Like Mr. Larson said, this is a legislative act, so we will have a public hearing and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the city council. Before we open up the public hearing, do any commissioners have any questions for staff or comments? I don't see any hands raised, so if staff could help us go ahead and open up the public hearing, let's do that.
No public comments at this time. 30 seconds. No public comments.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public comment period for item number one.
Okay, so for tonight, I believe the agenda was set up with seven items on it. Items two and three have been canceled. And with that, we will go ahead and do a roll call. We'll start with Ally Jones. And we'll come back to Ally. We'll go to Deborah Jensen.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Russell Phillips, no conflicts.
Thank you. Lisa Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Dana Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Laurie Urquiaaga, no conflicts.
Commissioner Henry?
Ryan Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knutson?
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
I'm Dave Anderson. I have no conflicts. And back to Commissioner Jones. Is she here with us?
I am. Ally Jones, no conflict.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ally. Okay, great. We're just going to go ahead and dive in into item number one. The Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to remove the Design Review Committee requirement from Section 14.33A. Point four, excuse me, point 040 of the Provo City Code. And from there, we'll turn it over to Brandon Larson.
All right. Brandon Larson, Development Services Staff. I've got a little, this is a relatively straightforward request, I think. Back in June of last year, the Provo City Council adopted the Critical Hillside Overlay Zone with its numerous requirements. And after the adoption of that set of requirements, staff went through the process of reviewing a development application. And after reviewing that development application, staff recommends the elimination of subsection 3, 1433A, 40 subsection 3, the requirement for development or design review requirements. And I'll get into that in just a moment to explain why. But just briefly, in this presentation, I'm going to explain the proposal and briefly address the powers and duties of the Design Review Committee and explain why the requirements for design review isn't necessarily helpful or necessary as we have it set forth. So subsection 1433A 43 requires any residential or non-residential development and any main buildings to go to the DRC for review. And that can be a little bit of a challenge. Like I said, as we started reviewing the recently proposed development in the CH Zone, we realized that requiring all residential developments to go to the DRC for review can actually, may not be super necessary or helpful. And again, I'll get to that in just a moment. I want to point out the powers and duties of the, kind of talk a little bit about the powers and duties of the DRC, which are established in 1404A 20 of the City Code. The powers and duties are pretty straightforward. It basically says in that section that the DRC will review and make design recommendations for buildings and uses subject to project plan approval and design review. I think one of the keys there is when a use or building requires project plan, that's a pretty good indication that needs to go to the DRC. And I'll point out that the plaques are one of those uses for like single-family homes. That's not a use that goes to, typically goes to the DRC. So another point that I'd make is in section 1437, 1437 200 of the City Code, or 280, Design Review Criteria set forth, and that criteria identifies what uses need to go through the design review process. Three-unit or greater multifamily structures, projects with groupings of more than two-family structures, and then non-residential structures requiring project plan approval. So you notice that single-family developments aren't listed there. So project plan, when we review plaques for a single-family development's project, DRC is not one of those things that is included, simply because it's not easy to do design review and there's no buildings or landscape to consider. So an example of when a residential development goes through the project plan or goes to DRC is when a project plan is required, like a condo application. Condo application has buildings that have architecture and landscaping, and so then the DRC has something to look at. So this proposed amendment, of course, just eliminates the requirement. The reason why we're proposing to eliminate the requirement in its entirety is because there's other sections of the City Code, namely 1404A, that sufficiently, in the staff's minds, sufficiently provide for when an application should go to the Design Review Committee for review. So again, we believe that the code, the existing code requirements outside of the one proposing to eliminate already sufficiently provides for when we should take something to the DRC. So with that, I would recommend to the Planning Commission that they recommend approval to the City Council of this proposed amendment.
Mr. Larson, thank you. So for me, it kind of distills like this, that a typical subdivision proposal with lots for individual, single-family homes does not go to the Design Review Committee.
Correct.
But that the requirement is a little bit different currently for subdivisions with individual lots for single-family homes in the critical hillside overlay zone. So you're just making it uniform with other subdivisions in the city.
Yeah, that's correct. We're trying to, yeah, make it consistent throughout. I think there are a couple of, I did find one or two other zones that may have similar problems, like the CH Zone. But if you look at the powers and duties section of the City Code, I think the intent's pretty clear that it's for buildings and uses that are subject to project plan approval. And single-family developments are not subject to project plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Like Mr. Larson said, this is a legislative act, so we will have a public hearing, and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the City Council. Before we open up the public hearing, do any commissioners have any questions for staff or comments? I don't see any hands raised, so if staff could help us go ahead and open up the public hearing, let's do that.
No public comments at this time. 30 seconds. No public comments.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public comment period for item number one and turn the discussion again back to the commission.
Dave, I'm wondering, there still is somewhere in the code that we have some timeframe that front yards are to be landscaped on all new, single-family homes?
Yeah. Yeah, there are other requirements. There's actually landscape requirements within the CH Zone itself, but we're not proposing to eliminate those. And certainly, people are required to landscape their yards, or else they'll have a visit from the Zone Enforcer, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Thank you. I'm just going to say that it makes sense to me to make a text amendment that harmonizes this with other parts of the code, and I don't have any objections.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Jensen, Deborah Jensen?
Thank you. It just appears to me that it's simply eliminating redundant language that's found elsewhere in the code that would apply to anything beyond single-family.
Well, I'll echo that that's how I see it as well. Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
I was just going to say, if there wasn't any other feedback, I would be happy to make a motion, but I'll let you call that one.
I think that'd be appropriate if you'd like to do that.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend forwarding a positive recommendation to the City Council for item number one. The Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to remove the Design Review Committee requirement from Section 14.33A.040 of the Provo City Code.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second Commissioner Jensen's motion on item one.
Okay. That was Commissioner Deborah Jensen. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, once again, I don't see any hands raised, so we will go right down the line with a roll call vote. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson? And I vote aye as well. The motion carries nine to zero. And I'm just going to restate this. Yes, we're moving on to item number four. Great. Items number four and five. Mr. Ardmore, would you like us to read those in together?
Yes, please.
Great. Zachary Steele requests concept plan approval for a neighborhood subdivision located at 1400 West 890 South in a proposed RAA Zone. That's item number four. Item number five, Zachary Steele requests a zone change from A1.1 to RAA for 13.07 acres located in approximately 1400 West 890 South. Mr. Ardmore?
Thank you. So here's the area. If you're familiar with the Century Home Development down off of 600 South, 1400 West brings you into that development. There's many homes that are now built on these lots, and they're getting ready to complete the second phase as well. So the area that we're talking about is this area highlighted in red. It's currently agricultural zone. The general plan marks this area as residential. So this request would conform with the general plan and the Southwest Future Land Use Map as well. That's what these kind of extra bubbles are, just showing that residential, R1 or anything less dense than that would be fine for these areas, as far as the Southwest Future Land Use Map goes. The actual request is for a residential agricultural zone with an accessory apartment overlay, and that would apply to these properties. You can see highlighted in the red shape here. They've, the only home that's existing is right here. That's a home of the Steele family that's used this property as kind of agricultural use. They intend to keep doing that, but this vicinity map shows kind of how that would develop into half-acre lots as time goes on, and they either build themselves, subdivide and build themselves, or subdivide and sell the lots. This is kind of how that would work. I think an important piece on this is, as it went through staff review, we really worked hard to direct the applicants on maintaining a street network. So the Century Home brought this 890 South to here. That road is to continue over to 1100 West. That's an important connection on the west side that's envisioned by the master plan. But then, taking 1400 West down and separating the school property from future residential uses and into this subdivision that was recently approved here. So it provides a good street network. The actual concept plan is just for this property here. At this time, they just wanted to do a one-lot subdivision that they would come back with if the zone change is approved for a member of the family, the applicant Zachary Steele, to build a home on. That's really all this is about, is to build a home on the family's property, but to keep the agricultural uses there. And that's what the RAA Zone was asked for. Diving deeper and zooming into the lot, this is kind of his site plan that he would bring forward if the zone change was approved. And you can see how that is adjacent to, over here, the Century Homes product and the existing structure on the property. Staff's recommending approval on the concept plan and the zone change, just because it does meet the general plan, it does meet the future land use map. I think it also helps to provide, to go back here, it provides a nice mix. You've got R18 and R110 zoning a lot on the west side. I think these half-acre lots mixed in the middle of that provides a nice variety of lots and most likely housing types in the future, and helps to provide that mix on the west side. It helps to provide housing choices for Provo City, and it helps to provide street connections. So those are the reasons we're recommending approval, and that's all I have for this one. I think you're muted, Dave.
That only happens about 10 times a day, but thank you for pointing that out. The frontage is already improved for the lot, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, the frontage is improved until 1400 West right now.
Okay. Going that way. So the zone that's proposed, that only permits single-family dwellings, but they would be eligible to have accessory apartments?
Right, yeah. If they met the different regulations of 1430, having the extra parking and owner occupied in one of the units and all those different regulations, they would get a permit to do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
So I had a few questions for Mr. Ardmore. The A overlay, do you know, I just, I worry, is that risky to throw an accessory apartment overlay in the middle of a single-family neighborhood?
If you ask me personally, I don't think so. I think we need more of that. I think it was hit on a little bit in our study session today, but also the state in its current legislation is looking at directing cities statewide to provide more opportunities for accessory living units in their cities. So I think it's coming either way. I think that it gives some security to the neighborhood as well, as when the unit has to be owner-occupied, you're always going to have owner on the property. That seems to be a goal of the current general plan, and an issue that comes up a lot in these meetings. So I don't think there's a risk there. I think it helps housing affordability.
My other question was about the piecemeal nature of the request. The first one was for the subdivision to the south, and now we've got this one. Do you know if there's another one coming? And was it maybe just because they were asking for one type of zoning for one and another type of zoning for the other?
From what I understand, as the generations of the Steele family kind of grow up and grow out and want to build, they intend to create these lots one at a time. The RAA was chosen to kind of protect the agricultural rights that they still want to use until that happens. But yeah, that piecemeal probably will continue in the future, from what I understand. I guess the applicant could shed some more light on that.
Thanks, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? But I'll just mention this, that I think there's a genuine need in Provo to maybe kind of balance some of the more dense development that's happened with projects like this, single-family homes. And here, we're not talking about adding a lot to the inventory with just one home, but I appreciate how it's being demonstrated, how, you know, potentially the rest of the property could develop, and, you know, what would be allowed with the proposed zone change. And that being said, I'm generally not a real big fan of really big lots and some of the inefficiencies that they bring, but I am a big fan of accessory apartments, and I think those actually work much, much better in neighborhoods where you have a little bit more space, like you would have with half-acre lots. So this is kind of a dream proposal for me to see on our agenda, given all of the different things that come into play. And I just hope the rest of the property ends up developing the way that we're seeing with the concept. So that's maybe my two cents worth. I think I saw Mr. Steele's hand up a minute. We'll turn things over to the applicant if they have anything to add.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I just, Aaron had asked us to chime in on that, and I guess to clarify and explain our intent on that a little bit in more detail is that it is a family piece of property. We are not developers. We're a family trying to provide homes for each of our children, and so the intent is not to develop it and sell lots. I know that was mentioned. It was just develop it as the family grows, and our children are there for a need to build a home. We can provide that to them, and that's really all we're trying to do here. So the intent would be, yes, full half-acre lots for as long as we're around.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? I don't see any hands raised. Item number five is a legislative item. So as I understand it, the commission will be acting on item number four and making a recommendation on item number four, excuse me, on item number five. I can't remember if there's a public comment required on each four and five, and others for five, so we'll go ahead and open things up for public comments.
No public comments at this time. 30 seconds. No public comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, anything?
I guess just one comment. Mr. Chair, I love the diversity of the lot sizes in this area. Looks like we've got 8,000 square foot, there's some 10s and 12s and the half acres, but the half acres have basement apartments. I mean, just the diversity of housing types in such a small area, in my mind, is a little bit refreshing versus the 40 acres of all third acre lots. I really like that this can attract over time people in different stages of life that will keep not only income diversity, but also age diversity, and just create an area that's constantly revitalizing in different ways. So I do like that diversity of the area. If the plan builds out that way, that's my only concern, doing one house at a time, does the plan change over time? But overall, I like the direction we're going here.
I can't agree more. I think this is really unique, and I don't want to suggest that I lack faith, but just like you said, I really hope that what we're seeing there on attachment number two, and just how everything could fit together and could ultimately be developed for the same reasons that you noted, I think this really could help make for a great neighborhood.
I guess one more comment, the street network there, too. Once again, you can start to see real blocks forming. It's not a tree pattern of streets. There's a lot of interconnectivity. The block sizes are small. I think there's a lot of really good points here.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, I'm ready to make a motion on item four if there's no further discussion.
Well, I didn't see a whole lot of raised hands, so I get the feeling that we're maybe ready for that.
All right. Then I will move that the Planning Commission approve item four. Zachary Steele requests concept plan approval for a residential subdivision located at 1400 West 890 South in a proposed RAA parentheses A Zone in the Sunset Neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. Do we have a second for her motion?
I can second.
That was Commissioner Urquiaaga. Do we have any discussion on the motion to approve item number four? Once again, I don't see any hands, so back to the roll call. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson? We might need you to say that again. Thank you. And I vote aye as well. Motion carries nine to zero. Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm ready to make a motion on item number five.
Please do.
Thank you. I move that we make a positive recommendation for item five to municipal council. Zachary Steele requests a zone change from A1.1 to RAA parentheses A for 13.07 acres located in approximately 1400 West 890 South in the Sunset Neighborhood.
Thank you.
I will second again.
Okay. That was Commissioner Urquiaaga. Any discussion on the motion to recommend approval of item number five? Okay. Once again, I don't see any hands. So back again to the top. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Once again, motion carries nine to zero. And we will move on to items number six and seven. For Ms. McNally, would you like those read in together?
Yes, please.
Super. Item six, the community and neighborhood services department requests an ordinance text amendment to chapter 14.20B of the Provo City Code to update development standards of the Freeway Commercial Two Zone. And item number seven, the community and neighborhood services department requests a zone change from A 1.20 agricultural zone to the Freeway Commercial Two Zone for approximately 75 acres located at approximately 500 West Lakeview Parkway. Ms. McNally?
Thank you. So staff would like to propose a text amendment for the Freeway Commercial Two Zone. And we've amended it to include additional guidelines that would be applicable to all of the FC2 zones. Specific changes to the text include eliminating maximum height allowance while maintaining overlay zones and design corridors. And there are more in-depth transitional development standards that were created specifically for a proposed lot along Lakeview Parkway. So just to go through those, some of those changes in 14, 14, that 20B. 070, we have the building height requirement. Can't see. Sorry. That just changes the maximum height while still preserving the overlay zones, as I stated. And then the most substantial changes are in the transitional development standards, including that the structure shall be located at least 100 feet from the nearest residential property line. And then on to point five parcels that have frontage on Lakeview Parkway shall have a minimum 65-foot transitional setback from the property line of any parcel developed with single-family residential uses. And the setback area shall be landscaped and maintained according to Provo City Code, chapter 15.20. The applicant is required to submit a landscape plan which meets those requirements stated in section 15.20.050. And the trees shall be required in the landscape plan and shall be selected from the City of Provo Tree Selection Guide published by the Provo Power Department. And the trees and planting shall be arranged to maximize the vertical screening of the commercial area from existing residential zones. Additionally, the applicant will be required to coordinate with the director of Parks and Recreation or its designated to incorporate any existing or proposed trail systems or improvements in the area. And this is the lot in question highlighted. This is, right here is Lakeview Parkway. You can see the freeway interchange right here. We're proposing the zone change to this area also because it just makes practical sense and would be an appropriate change for this area where it's right off of the freeway. This zone request comes a little bit differently. As we generally are approached with the developer who has a specific use in mind, in this case, there is no pending developmental proposal associated with this parcel of land. Staff wanted to make a proactive change to this area and zone it so that future developers know the kind of developments that we want to see here and also the kind of developments we don't want to see here. So the neighborhood has expressed a desire for development other than multifamily on this area of the neighborhood. And the staff is proposing a rezone of the entire northern lot. There was a portion of that in the future land use map that was intended to be LDR. Our hope is that in zoning the entire parcel, we can use part of that for additional setback from the residential area to protect that neighborhood and from any future commercial development there. Let's see, to the next slide. So this just shows the Southwest area future land use map. You can see down in this corner where we've got commercial zones and then that LDR piece that I mentioned that we want to incorporate into the FC2 zone, again, to provide additional protection for that neighboring neighborhood right here. So just for your, for some context, we did hear back from the neighborhood, there is some concern. This is the parcel in question. This is the parcel that's just north of the Parkway. You can see Lakeview Parkway right here. And then here's the freeway. So there, in order for this to be developed, there needs to be quite a bit of fill to bring it up to this level and out of the flood zone. So we did hear from the neighborhood on protecting the dike. The second picture here, right along here is where the dike runs. And then this last picture is from the neighborhood side. You can see, here's the dike back here. It just goes to show how high up that development would come. So our hope is that, again, in rezoning that strip that was designated LDR, we can provide a buffer, more of a buffer against some of those things that they're concerned about in the neighborhood. And we have Keith Morey here. He's our economic development director. And would you like, he has a few thoughts that he'd like to share?
Thanks for letting me be with you. If you remember, we talked about this quite a bit before in the work session. I thought Robert did an incredible job, and so did you, making the presentation tonight. I think, given the fact that Provo has very few freeway access points, this piece of property is critical. And I think we all know that. The land use map, the future land use map suggests that we all know that. But one of the problems we were suffering from is because we hadn't taken any initiative to date or hadn't had any applications that reflected that future land use. We were getting a lot of applications that probably weren't in harmony with what we want the future use of this property to be. And just to be honest, I mean, I think that's a waste of an applicant's time. It's a waste of employee time. And I think it further frustrates the surrounding community because they see us processing those in good faith because an applicant is allowed to. But they don't really comprehend or understand that, you know, that's not our future vision. So I think by rezoning this, we state very clearly that we heard their comments years ago during the design and laying out the future land use map and that we're responding to that in an effort to set the table for what this really will be. I think it helps the landowner to start to go out and identify potential prospects, and us as well. It's very difficult to convince a developer to come develop a piece of property when there's a lot of work to do, such as zone changes and things of that nature. And I think this kind of shows that we get what the future is going to be, and we're doing our part to clear the path so that that can move forward. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I think this is the right move. I know that there were some concerns about the low-density residential to the north, but I think, as we talked about that before, it's really clear that if you allow low-density residential on that strip, it does create a buffer for the existing residents, but that buffer is not a buffer for the new residents that will move in. And I think by requiring a significant landscape barrier and working with whoever the future developer will be to get the kind of landscape buffer that we want, it'll be a much better amenity and opportunity for both the commercial property and the residents that already live there.
Thank you, both Ms. McNally and Mr. Morey. I have a couple of questions. And before I formulate those, I absolutely love the concept of, you know, maybe preempting a different type of proposal and otherwise making it very clear to the world that Provo City values this site as maybe a unique place where a certain land use and a certain type of commercial development could be supported, which is what I really view the proposal that the FT, excuse me, FC2 zone as being. I might have questions about the buffer. So, but before I ask that, it's my understanding that the FC2 zone does not allow residential uses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the setback in the FC2 zone relative to buildings to the neighborhood to the north would be 65 feet. Is that right?
It's 100, isn't it?
It's 100. Okay. Got it.
Changed in the...
So the, any loading area would be...
Oh, I'm sorry. It is 65. The loading area is 100 feet.
Okay. And I guess that's where, with a current height limit of something, I think it's about 50 feet. I might have misread that or misnoted it. I think 100-foot setback or 65-foot setback to the residential neighborhood to the north is plenty. I think that's entirely appropriate. But by completely eliminating the height requirement and zoning the property so that somebody potentially could put, yeah, I mean, we're seeing maybe seven or eight-story buildings elsewhere in Provo, something like that, that close to the neighborhood to the north, it seems like the proposal is kind of eroding the idea that there would be a buffer to that neighborhood to the north versus having the LDR kind of type of use between the new non, not, excuse me, the new non-residential use in the FC2 zone and that neighborhood to the north. What am I missing there? Do I have that wrong?
No, I think, if you don't mind, I'll respond to that. I think that's accurate, Dave. I guess from my perspective, that's a site plan issue. I think we have the ability to work with whatever developer comes to us and asks that those facilities that might be higher or might have an impact on the residential unit be placed farther away, closer to the freeway, closer to Lakeview than to the residential. I mean, that's just moving pieces around in the site plan. And I don't think there's any entitlement right that says that they necessarily get the opportunity to put that right up against that as opposed to us suggesting that we want it farther away. But I really don't know how you eliminate that unless you say, you know, you want the buffer to be 200 feet. And at that point, you just end up with a big, huge no man's land that nobody really knows what to do with.
Yeah, I think I agree with part of that. But honestly, I don't believe that with the changes that are proposed, if a developer came in and wanted to put 150-foot tall building 65 feet from the neighborhood to the north, that the city could say no. I think this proposed language completely vests somebody that makes an application under these rules to be able to do that. And like you, I, for me, it's not about a bigger buffer, but just simply limiting, you know, the height in proximity. In fact, I would go as far as to say, I think 65 feet creates wasted space. But also, I, you know, trying to be sympathetic to those neighbors. If I were them, I wouldn't want to have a, you know, a 70 or 80-foot tall building over there either. And that's really the only concern that I guess I have relative to removing the height requirement. Let me, maybe just one last question. The proposal to eliminate the height requirement, what's the desired outcome of that?
Dave, I think I'll jump in on this one. This is Robert. And I think that your point is well noted. The existing height limit is problematic because it limits the FC2 zone to 50 feet or three stories. We were kind of thinking along the fact of a modern hotel is generally a little bit taller than that. So we wanted to provide opportunity for those types of uses. However, I don't think that we're opposed to implementing a height limit. We removed it. And I think that's kind of what we wanted to get from the planning commission was what you would be comfortable with. As far as a height limitation, we felt that the 65-foot buffer would, you know, create that situation of separation, even if there was a bit taller building along there. But we are very open to whatever the planning commission is comfortable with.
I think more than anything, you know, I would like to create an environment where we open up opportunities instead of restrict opportunities. You know, I'm not saying that this is likely, but, you know, if some large developer came together with an incredible plan that incorporated 10-story office building on that parcel, you know, I think we would want to make that happen if it was possible at all. We might want it moved as far away from the residential as we could. And maybe a possible solution is to step the height restriction up and down so that the farther away from the residential you are, the higher you can go, the closer you are, the lower you can go, or something like that.
Yeah, with what both you, Keith, and Robert just mentioned, I agree completely. I like the idea of, you're almost rolling out the red carpet by making the zone as unrestricted as possible. I've been in enough conversations, I guess, where that neighborhood to the north has weighed in that, and I've seen other things done in Provo that make me really sensitive to what happens, you know, proximity to a neighborhood like that. What you mentioned by way of maybe stepping up or down, depending on how you look at it, the height requirements relative to the proximity of the neighborhood to the north, I love that. I think that might be a great way to create both the opportunity and to protect the neighbors to the north. And with that, Lisa Jensen?
I have modified my comments because a lot of mine were similar to what Mr. Anderson was saying. But I agree that the setback related to the height would solve the concerns that I had about it being inadequate setback and then also wondering why the height restriction was eliminated if we're trying to protect the neighborhood. So I like that as a compromise solution that I think accomplishes the goals without setting us up. I always hate to come up with a, with a new regulation or an adapted wording that relies on staff interpretation to carry out the intent. And if we can, if we can carry out the intent with the wording, then I feel like we're in a safer position to not, to not build something that's precarious. So I like that idea. The two questions I had, one was about the fact that we're sort of just saying we know better than the Southwest area plan by saying that the LDR that was on the area plan isn't necessary. And I can, I can see that logic. I just wonder what message that sends to the people, the neighborhood that created this plan with years of input to just suddenly take that out. So I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just maybe throwing out this, we need to be cautious if we start rezoning things with an economic development incentive that makes perfect sense to the community without taking into account the land use sort of tag that's there.
No, and if I stated or implied that we know better, I didn't mean to suggest that.
Oh, no, no, no. Before you apologize any further, there was no accusation there. I feel like us making a change to it may I feel like us making a change to it may send that message that we know better than what was decided in that plan. So is there any maybe staff input on that idea, though, of what message that sends to the neighborhood when we, as a city, propose something like this that puts that idea aside?
I wasn't here for that part of the process. I think my understanding of history is that that was done in an attempt to to help the residents understand that we were sympathetic to their concerns about wanting increased density next to their neighborhoods, and I think that's a legitimate concern. I think that just from a logic perspective, suggesting that my house needs a buffer and I want to make your house, your new house, that buffer just would kind of imply that all you've done is moved the problem from my front yard or backyard to yours. And although I understand that the existing residents might see that as a solution, I don't think the future residents will. And so I think, you know, as time has gone by and we've had the opportunity to reflect on what the impact of that actual decision might look like, we've had time to reflect and come up with an option that we think meets their needs and maybe in a more appropriate way that doesn't perpetuate the problem. So I think that's why we were feeling like the landscape buffer would be a very similar redress for them with not the kind of impact that more residential would be in that zone.
Lisa, this is Robert again.
Thank you, because I totally agree with everything that Keith just said. So what I'm just trying to say is how does it affect the neighborhood having invested in that plan?
Yeah, let me try and maybe chime in on that a little bit. I think it's a great point and something that we really need to be hyper-aware of, frankly. And that kind of precipitates the reason for the landscape buffer and why we kind of settled on that 65-foot number is if you think about a traditional LDR development, one of the most predominant land uses in there is a row of townhouses. And we just kind of thought about a typical townhouse development, what that width would imply as far as, you know, accessing those and where the street would be and the structure of the house, and kind of came up with that 65-foot number to honor the idea of what the intention of that LDR buffer zone was for, but without creating a further problem down the road when those townhouses were developed and now all of a sudden they're only, you know, 10 feet from a commercial development. So we really tried to balance those two ideas of making sure that the intent of the zone and the intent of the future land use map was observed, but coming up with what we kind of thought was maybe a more practical solution.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert, for chiming in because that gives me better confidence that the neighborhood will feel heard and that the intent of the ordinance was, even though it wasn't interpreted literally, that it was taken into account. My last question was, where do you anticipate road access would come from to these parcels? Would it be... I know you can't have it really close to that interchange. Are you going to filter everything in from that north-south street to the west? Or what would be anticipated? I know it's obviously not a proposal, but just so the neighbors and even just the idea of the development, is it realistic to have the volumes of traffic that something might be creating coming in on that road?
I think it's going to be a development issue because I think we're going to have restrictions of how many times we can access that or the developer can access that off of Lakeview. But I think they're probably going to need more than one access point, so I think you're probably going to have to have accesses off of both. And then we'll just have to determine as they go through site plan review and with our traffic engineers, how far away from the interchange you have to be and if there is room for more than one access. I haven't done the calculations. I'd be surprised if there's room for more than one off of Lakeview, but we would just have to look at that.
I'm done, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Lisa. You brought up a couple of things that I hadn't necessarily planned on bringing up, but I would not want to cause any delay relative to the proposed change because I think this really does need to be a really high priority for the city. So I'd be comfortable acting on the proposed zone change tonight, but for a lot of reasons, including conversations that we've had very recently that suggest that we're treating this area plan as a document that needs to be followed very explicitly, you know, down to very detailed numbers in terms of units per acre and that type of thing. I think the plan simply would need to be changed at some point in the near future so that the plan does remain consistent with what we're talking about tonight. So I'd be comfortable if that were to come back before us so that that LDR was changed to whatever designation it would be. Commercial, I think, is simply how it would be. And I guess that's my thought on that. I don't view changing the plan as being at all a negative, but I think maintaining consistency between the plan and the law, which is what zoning really is, is very important. So Commissioner Henry?
I would just chime in, and we totally agree with that, and we will bring you a general plan amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I think about this, I think about the process. I know before we had mentioned possibly considering the area for a area plan to kind of give an idea of what we think. It sounds like we know generally what we want. And I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to create a plan. And I don't think we need to hire a consultant to do it. And I don't think it needs to be well-developed. I happened to be on Vineyard's website today, and one of their general plans was a bunch of scratchy trace paper drawings. Clearly, everything wasn't figured out. Just something to give a forecast of what we expect the site to be, to address some of these things, the buffer. And by using that plan, by creating a plan that is very general, very scratchy, maybe that would help us depict the code and how we want that code to look. Again, we're not wasting their time. We make it very clear that this plan is just a forecast. It's not a set in stone. We want it exactly like this, but more as a concept and a vision for what we want the property to be. Have any, like, internal charrettes been done in that way where we kind of just sketchily draw out what we expect the property could look like?
No, we haven't done anything like that. I've had several conversations with different developers about the potential of developing that property and what could be there. You know, I think a lot of them are interested in the prospect but are kind of at a wait-and-see point to make sure that we're going to move forward with this before they want to really invest any time or interest in presenting anything. This site is complicated because the amount of work that would have to be done on it as far as fill and other things like that to make it developable. So any additional cost, I think people are hesitant to pursue that until they know that it's a legitimate opportunity. But, you know, maybe that's something that becomes part of the general plan amendment. Maybe part of the general plan amendment, we spend some time with the planners and kind of conceptualize in maybe a bubble map way or something like that, how that commercial property might lay out or something like that.
Yeah, that was my question. Like an internal charrette, would the city be open to doing something like that just to understand visually what we're considering so that it it gives us something to base our decisions on in the actual code? I guess in a way is, you know, you're going to a garden party and they say, "Bring a dessert." You know, that could be anything. I mean, it's too vague and it feels like this property needs something more like, no, we want cookies and brownies or we want key lime pie and chocolate cake. You know, how do we give a little more direction since it feels like we want more direction? Can we visually show that while still leaving the developer open to to put their own spin on it when they get there, just to kind of clarify to them what we're expecting?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're happy to spend some time thinking about that and kind of evaluating what the opportunities are.
You know, I don't mean to play favorites at all, but I'm really anxious to get Deborah Jensen's thoughts on that before we do that and maybe anything else that you want to comment on, Deborah. I really appreciate the idea, Commissioner Henry, that it's advisable, I think, to try to paint as clear of a picture as to what, you know, a community wants for potential developers. You know, that's how ultimately you end up getting, you know, maybe what you envisioned for a particular property or development. Candidly, I have not gotten the impression that developers are beating down anybody's door in Provo to build, you know, developments where you're maybe taking like 40 acres on the north side of the Parkway here or some acreage on the south side and to do, you know, big office buildings, big, you know, retail, you know, big box kind of retail or hospitality like with a hotel or any of those different types of things. And sometimes, you know, explicit plans that cities put together for those types of things, explicit development, you know, design guidelines and regulations like that encourage people to land elsewhere, you know, which I think may be worth considering. So Commissioner Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That wasn't on my topics, but I'll add to that. I'm not that familiar with the FC2 zone. Is this a new zone or is this something that we already have in place elsewhere in Provo? I guess that's a question for staff?
Yes, it is in place in other places in Provo.
Such as?
Along the freeway interchange at Center Street, there's some FC2 zone there. Basically, Deborah, the easiest way to consider the FC2 zone is like SC3 without the multifamily or residential component.
Okay, thank you. Well, along with the discussion of setting expectations for development, whether or not the FC2 zone specifies where parking can be located, where service must be located, all those sort of nitty-gritty things of the site that make a huge impact on the visual perception of the development, I think those things need to be accounted for, whether that's through diagrams, images of examples or whatnot. But it's certainly something that should be a topic of discussion. Going back to the FC2 zone, is there any specific reason why you chose to choose a zone that does not permit any residential as opposed to a mixed-use environment that could become more of an amenity that perhaps the rest of the south side could bike or walk to? That's just a question, what you're thinking is about that. I understand it complicates the development process because oftentimes it's a different type of developer that does mixed-use versus strictly commercial. Could you speak to that a little bit for us, please?
Yeah, I mean, I think the primary concern was kind of back to my original comment that we have very little freeway access, and so trying to maximize the commercial opportunity for those, I think, is paramount. We've had a number of proposals that came forward and suggesting residential on that site. And I think one of the concerns was, you know, if you allow for residential, do you have somebody that, to meet the commercial requirement, you know, puts a large residential development in there with a convenience store on the corner and a gas station and says, "Yeah, we did both. We gave you commercial and we gave you residential." I think there's enough residential support in that area to the north and what is already existing to the west and will continue to be built to the west, but I'm not sure that more residential there really would support significantly whatever retail goes in that location. Plus, you've got the addition of the residential that's going to go into Norda College just across the freeway and other things like that. So really, I think it was just an attempt to try to shift the attention away from residential to commercial.
Also, Deborah, I mean, it's a very, very good point. And as a planner, you know, one that we struggle, personally struggle with, to be honest, it is a concerted effort to honor the wishes of this neighborhood that from the get-go of the Southwest Plan in that whole process, excuse me, probably the concern that we heard the most regarding this piece of property was the influx and just the overuse of the potential of multifamily on this site. So that's really specifically why the FC2 zone was chosen because it does not have that multifamily site. Because several applicants have approached the city already, approached the neighborhood already about the possibility of developing here. Each one of those applications or kind of pencil drawings always include a multifamily element in order to make the project pencil. And every time, that is something that the neighborhood is very concerned and feels like there's a little bit of trust lost there that the city continues to see these proposals for multifamily. And that was something specific that they did not want and reiterated over and over again in the Southwest Plan application or planning process.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that discussion. I also appreciate that we're being proactive and considering what we want to see happen at this site in advance of having a zoning proposal and a development concept brought to us without having gone through that process. One other thing, I know I was part of some of those neighborhood meetings for the Southwest neighborhood. And there was some, a fair amount of discussion about Lakeview Parkway being the barrier to further development south. And I noticed that this proposal is proposing to include the portion of land south of Lakeview Parkway. I understand the economics of wanting to do that. My only concern is that it may open up the door to development pressure in other areas south of Lakeview Parkway. I believe if memory serves, there were a few landowners, primarily rangeland for cattle, and it's definitely challenged by wetlands for development that just wanted to raise the issue that it could open the door to further development pressures on the south side of Lakeview Parkway, which I think all of us would not be in favor of.
We're very aware of those concerns. There have been other thoughts about other things that might appropriately go along that south side of Lakeview and other places that we have just flat said, "No, you know, we're not going to pursue those at all because we're going to honor that vision that nothing would be built on that south side." I think because this is right up against the freeway interchange, it's just slightly different. But I agree with you. It is something for us to pay attention to and make sure that we don't allow development creep farther west along Lakeview.
Right. Thank you. The height restriction discussion, yeah. There needs to be a height restriction, not infinity. Understood that no matter how high you go, you have to park it on the site. So that's going to regulate things somewhat. However, I think the issue of buffers and building setbacks should be addressed. I agree with Mr. Anderson that the 65 foot buffer is pretty excessive. In my experience, 35 to 40 feet is pretty generous, even for a tall building. But I think one of the things that I don't see addressed too frequently in the Provo codes from a design standpoint is building step back requirements. And other cities I've worked in do require that if you're abutting a residential zone of any kind with a commercial zone or a higher intensity use zone, even multifamily, they require step backs, not just setbacks. So I would encourage staff to consider step backs in the building facade where they are adjacent to residential areas. That is oftentimes as or more effective than just buffer zones that are landscaped. And I think those are the main points I wanted to touch on. Thank you.
You're muted again, Dave.
Yeah, I've proven it. I will never learn. Commissioner Uchiaga.
Thank you. Couple of things, I, I was thinking in terms of a tiered or stepped height requirement and following up on Brian's suggestion, there probably should be a diagram that sort of has the sightlines. Permissible sight lines from the perspective of the residential area or just, you know, an angle, whatever, that shows people how that would have to work. I do wonder, as we're talking about these height requirements, if we need to wait for the text to be revised to incorporate those, if it's not a little bit premature to do this. And then although I, I really like the idea of moving proactively and I really don't like the idea of slowing this down very much, but I think that the textual language is important. And I don't know how we work that in. I, I don't like the idea of, of changing, doing an ordinance text amendment and then amending it again three weeks or five weeks or six weeks later. The other question I have is with this, with that setback that is this substantial, are there uses that are permitted in that landscaped area or is it just fallow?
It's just being improved and maintained landscaping. Or like a trail system or things like that along the Dyke. That's why one of the requirements is to work with the Parks and Rec Department on development of that.
So maybe picnic areas or something like that for people to be able to eat lunch if they're in a building or just trails would be the extent of it.
Potentially, potentially, you know, recreation, like a few tables or something like that, that would be fine.
Okay.
Parking, would that be allowed, the different things like that? In the six, not even that, okay.
Those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Uchiaga. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak as to, I guess, the building height and setback requirements and thought while, while we're having this, kind of looked at what some of the other neighboring communities have. Specifically, I looked at Pleasant Grove and their Grove Business Park. That's the development right off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard. There's some very large buildings there. And then I also looked at Lehigh, just for some comparative analysis and, and Lehigh, for example, had no building height restrictions. Pleasant Grove had a 65 feet was the building height max and then anything over that up to 110 was a conditional use permit with the required approval by, by the planning commission. In terms of setbacks, the Grove and Pleasant Grove, let's see, they had from the interstate, the setback was 50 feet. Other road setbacks were 25. And then I, I didn't have time to look at the landscape buffer, but I think some of them were like between 10 to 15 or 20 feet. Lehigh, Lehigh didn't address setbacks front and rear yards. So that just gives you a little bit of an idea of it, that they had a little bit of a blank slate and, and you can look to, I don't, I don't know, for, for either better or for worse, the types and anyone who's driven that corridor can see the types of buildings that have gone up. And, and we can look at the zoning of those neighbors and how they accommodated them. And if we like them, if we like those developments, maybe we might want to have the zoning match more of that than and then others that we don't like, then we could stray away from.
So I hear you saying we don't necessarily need to invent the wheel. You know, maybe there are some models out there that we can for better or worse, learn from. I think that's a great, I think that's a great approach. Anything else? Commissioner Gonzalez?
No, that's it. I just wanted to share that for comparison.
Gotcha. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, um, I, so this specific type of economic development is not my forte. So I just kind of have a question and to kind of give the context here, I was listening to what Commissioner Jensen said about the like mixed use kind of useful to the community element kind of development. And I do understand the reasoning behind, you know, where the neighborhood is coming from, et cetera. And so my question is just, we already have like the mall and East Bay, which granted aren't quite as immediately accessible from this freeway exit. But I think that we all are kind of aware of the general sentiment surrounding those industrialized areas of our town. So my question becomes why, like do, would we expect for some reason this area to be, and this is a legitimate question because I just don't know, like, would we expect this region to be more successful? Than those areas already for some kind of business?
Well, yeah, I, frankly, I think so. I mean, none of our freeway interchanges from a development perspective or necessarily designed ideally. You know, even the, the mall, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a process to get off the freeway and get to that. You can see it from the freeway, but getting it to it is a different story. The same thing with the East Bay shopping area. This is directly off of the freeway. I think it has better visibility and better access. I think it has the, a high potential to be potentially a regional shopping area. Out of all the interchange opportunities we have, it's probably the only one where you could expect to maybe attract something like a larger box retail like a Winko or, you know, Costco or something like that. And not that we have any of those lined up for development, but I think that's the type of density that we're hoping we can attract there through this, through this zoning. So I, I think this one is a little bit different than some of the ones you've mentioned because I think the access to it and the visibility to it are probably much better than we have in any other location in Provo. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it, it does. I just, then I start to compare it to, for example, the Walmart off of the Springville Interchange or the Winko off of the Orem Interchange, which I, in my mind, are equally accessible compared to like the Sam's Club in East Bay or anything at the mall. And those seem to be successful despite their lack of immediate access. But again, that's just kind of my thought process there.
I think Provo has a unique dynamic. I mean, one, one of them is, you know, our, our demographic has a little lower disposable income, which, which I think some, sometimes affects a little bit of our ability to attract and sustain retail. I think a lot of what you're seeing in our community right now with the some of the increased development that we're seeing in the infill development and residential, things like the residential around the Norta College are really going to prop up those retail places that you've seen suffer. We were just talking this morning with a couple of council members about the East Bay complex and how in years past, it has struggled over what it had originally been when it was originally built. But now you're seeing a lot of that starting to fill back up again where it's almost 100% full now. And not, you know, I, I think you're going to continue to see that kind of turnover and you're going to continue to see those improve as our residential density increases. And as the density in the valley increases, there was a central bank just did a symposium and had Natalie Gockner speak a week or two ago, and she said that over the last six years, there's been almost 50,000 new residents moving to Utah County. And I think that's the type of residential growth we're going to continue to see. And, and all of that, I think, adds stability to the retail outlets that we have and will, and the ones that we'll add.
So are we anticipating this property serving the community or serving, like the local community or serving people from other areas in the county accessing it via the highway?
If we're successful, I hope it does both. You know, one of the things we've struggled with and are trying to find a resolution to is grocery shopping on the west side. And we've had conversations about, you know, this may, may not be as ideal as other locations potentially that we have, but it is an option. And, and if there is some kind of a facility like, like the ones that you've mentioned, a Walmart or Winko or whatever that could be there, it could begin to solve that problem for not only our residents, but for those driving along the freeway. So I think that's what our hope is, is that we can find some kind of a use that's a benefit to our residents and to people that are coming up and down the freeway so that we capture both markets.
That covers it. Thank you for your help.
Yeah.
Boy, I, I just want to offer a couple of thoughts along the lines of your questions, Commissioner Jones. It really in support of what Mr. Morey said. In, I have really strong opinions and probably some biases along these lines, but I think first of all, the numbers that you can research via sales tax revenue and different things like that suggest that tens of thousands of Provo City residents patronize automobile oriented, big box retail developments in other communities every day. And I think there is value in communities keeping both those, those opportunities for commerce, you know, for the, the betterment of the quality of life of people that live in a community closer to home. And there are advantages for communities that can capture that revenue in the form of sales tax and things like that. And as of, you know, the past maybe couple of decades, I think Provo's really been on the losing end of those equations. So in as much as, you know, I don't think anybody looks at a Walmart and says, boy, that is in any way, shape or form, you know, great urban form and design and that type of a thing. And some of us may never patronize those places ourselves, but I think particularly given, you know, the demographics that we have in the community and things like that, that's where a lot of Provo households money ends up getting spent. It's in those types of environments and that's where I see adding this kind of the, kind of to the inventory of opportunities that we have in Provo really becomes a strength so that if somebody did come along and they wanted to, you know, you have a development that would, would maybe both like Keith said, capture regional commerce and provide more opportunities for residents of Provo. You can't replicate something with the kind of freeway visibility and access like we have here. And I think that's why it needs to be treated very specially. So that's just a couple of thoughts. Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, some follow up comments to both Ms. Jones and also your comments there, Mr. Anderson. My first thought is sales tax versus property tax. Clearly a Walmart is not going to give us the property tax that a, a Class A office building would. But obviously a Class A office probably isn't going to give us the sales tax a Walmart would. So which one do we prefer? But another question, a follow up to Ms. Jones for the city. I guess I'm still not quite sure what we're expecting here. Are we expecting to get more Winko big box? Are we hoping for, or no, I guess what's the, what's the highest and best use the city hopes to get there? Is it a shoebox Class A office like Lehigh? Is it a taller version of Riverwoods? Is it something like Farmington Station? What, what does the city really hope this parcel becomes?
As far as what we really hope this parcel becomes, Brian, I think is a, like Keith alluded to earlier, just a, a hub for not only our local residents. I mean, they continually have been asking for that and it's something important that we provide opportunities to, to have happen, but as growth happens, Provo needs to take advantage of all the regional economic opportunities that we can and, and we have limited ones, frankly, with the number of freeway exits that we have and, and this is one of our, our, our best opportunities to do so. I would, I would also add that I think that there might also be some opportunity for uses that are located on the interior of our city. Commercial uses, things like that, that may be of a more regional nature, that this might be a better location and then we could better utilize those areas within our city for more mixed use holistic development. So just other things to consider as well.
No, I, I fully agree with that. I think if we can make downtown a draw, we don't need this space to be a draw because it's really a draw to the edge of the city anyway. But as we were talking in the the work session before, to capture some of those drive through commuters with either a job or the retail spending on their way back home, I think either of those would be a good use, especially the freeway access. There's definitely a different typology that would be attracted there. But it would be nice to have a grocery store. And I, I mean, it's 55 acres. I think we can fit a grocery store and some office and maybe a hotel if somebody proposes. I mean, there's definitely plenty of room to, yeah, diversify that out. No, it's an interesting parcel for sure. That's all I've got.
Yeah, you know, your reference to Farmington Station is an interest one, interesting one. I, I'm not sure from my perspective that this site quite has that same feel. You know, for, I think Farmington Station was an, was an attempt on Farmington to create a heart of the community that they didn't feel that they had in a commercial destination. I think for us, we already have that in kind of our downtown Center Street area. And so I don't know that we necessarily feel compelled to try to recreate that. And so for me, this really feels more like some kind of a regional shopping potential. I, I love the concept of if it could be a mix of some kind of a higher density commercial like that with some office along with it and some other things like that that we really would have hit a home run, but trying to maximize that so that we capture the regional and the local traffic is really pretty important here.
I, I agree with that and I agree, Farmington Station to me would, would just end up competing with Riverwoods that we already have, what we're trying to accomplish at the mix. It doesn't have transit going out there that far, so it's not a transit hub. So I don't think Farmington Station would be a good use. Just trying to get an idea though of are we going for even more big box that we already have in East Bay? Or are we going for something more retail or is it office? Just trying to get an understanding where the city hopes it goes. retail or is it office? Just trying to get an understanding where the city hopes it goes.
Well, I, there's a lot of potential. I mean, I, I think what, um, Robert was kind of alluding to was, you know, maybe it's a potential to try to work with our auto dealerships to relocate from where they are in downtown to, to a location like this or something like that. Um, because those, those, uh, tent types of uses rely on visibility and freeway access and, uh, so we have, we have had those conversations. Actually, we're making, um, some good progress on those discussions before the pandemic hit last year and then that all kind of froze up. Um, but that is definitely a possibility that we would like to, um, to pursue and, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to have a more definitive answer on what, what our plan is. Um, we don't really have one, um, because I think the current land zoning has been a restriction to that. The pandemic has been a restriction to that. Um, really this is just an opportunity to be forward-thinking, um, see if we can create the opportunity for maybe some, some type of a, a retail grocery outlet if that, if that's possible or some other commercial, um, high-density opportunity that creates sales tax, um, there at that freeway interchange that, that, that we could really utilize.
Oh, that sounds great.
Keith, I, I, uh, have entirely come to believe that there's really only so much cities can do to attract certain kinds of non-residential development. And I think sometimes, um, we sort of fool ourselves to think that, that, you know, you might land like, let's just say a Farmington Station, that kind of a project because of something that a city does. I mean, there's so many things that are out of our control. Um, you know, relative to land use decisions and things like that that get made. Um, that have to fall into place for those investments to happen and to get people's attention, you know, um, in the, let's say retail world or like I said hospitality world, different things like that. Um, you know, several states away and, and that sort of a thing. Um, which is why I think it's really important for cities to be open-minded. And why I'm, I, I, I don't, I, I, I guess I am pushing back a little bit. Um, not that, uh, you know, you're at all aggressively pursuing the idea of trying to have maybe a real explicit vision for what happens with a property like this, but I, I think you put forth a framework that allows for a variety of things that you're comfortable with. And, you know, then you kind of go fishing and you see what, you know, with Keith's job, what, what he can, can try to, you know, help people take note of and, and attract to the community and that type of a thing and, um, that's about all you can do. And I think sometimes real explicit standards and that type of a thing, um, really hinder the effort that like a city economic development office might have. Um, but of course that's a, that's a matter of priority. In some places they're fine with that because they want a particular design and to create a particular maybe aesthetic for a community or, um, whatever, whatever that might be. And they don't care as much about, you know, other things, you know, maybe like, uh, the amount of commerce and, and jobs or any of those types of things. But, um, I think those are some things that Provo really lacks. And that's why I, I think this step of just changing the zoning is a really big deal and, um, I think it'd be wonderful if in the next ten years, the city could attract, you know, a few hundred thousand square feet of, of non-residential development to the site. So that being said, I hope I didn't miss any hands. I sure apologize if I did. Does anybody else, um, have any questions for staff before we open up things to public comment? I don't see any. Staff, can you help us with that?
No public comments at this time, thirty seconds. Caller one nine five, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Becky Bogdan and I'm the Lakeview Neighborhood Chair. And first of all, I'd like to thank staff and the planning commission for being sensitive to our neighborhood and, and to the needs and the desires to protect it. Um, we are very grateful for a setback. As aggressive as it is and for staff applying trees, so there's both a vertical and a horizontal setback. Um, to address the question for the LDR, the, the neighborhood didn't really want the LDR to begin with or any, any kind of residential there other than maybe an R one eight. So to have just the commercial without the LDR just isn't an issue as long as the neighborhood itself is protected. Um, to, to, to address the, the question about the south side of the Lakeview Parkway, um, the farmers in the area, they were all told that there was to be no development south of the parkway, that that was just a sensitive area and that their land was basically to be used as farmland. And a lot of them did sell their, their property to the city with that intent in mind. So to have any development south of the parkway is very sensitive to the community and we would like that upheld. Um, we do realize that they did have commercial over by the freeway and a lot of those that are not farmers, um, were supportive of having anything big box south of the, of the Lakeview Parkway as long as something north would be something that would protect the neighborhood. Um, we are very grateful that you guys are looking at height restrictions for close to the neighborhood and for protecting that in any way that can be protected. Um, any questions for me?
Thank you, Becky. I don't see any, any raised hands. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
No public comments. There are no additional public comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll close the public comment period for both items six and seven and Lisa Jensen.
I had a question for Mr. Day, David Day. Um, I just was thinking, um, if this is a hundred-year flood area, how and where do we anticipate diverting the water that will be displaced by the fill that would be required to develop these two parcels?
Yeah, if you look at, if you're to look at a uh, overhead aerial of this area, you'd notice that there's a major, um, storm drain just to the west that comes down Fifth West and all of that drainage would dump into that outfall out to Utah Lake. We'd have to purify the water before we do that, but that would be where that would go.
Would you purify it just by a filtration system off the property? It wouldn't require like a substation or something like that?
No, it, it, it would be separating out like the solids in the water. And most of the time we do that just by having a settlement area and, um, letting all of the, uh, stuff settle out. And then we also take that, uh, water where like the dirt would fall out and run it through some sort of a media. Uh, one, a good media is like grasses and stuff. And all oils and stuff would collect on that before it goes out to the lake.
So there's nothing in the drainage or flood potential that would make it a bad idea to develop these parcels from your perspective?
No, they would have to be brought up, like Spin mentioned, uh, to an elevation that's, uh, equivalent or greater than the flood stage of the lake. And so in, in this particular area, the Lakeview Parkway and Fifth West are about two feet above that. So if you can imagine bringing all that fill material into within two feet of the road is what it would be elevation-wise. So the, the site would be essentially two feet lower than the road.
How does the height of the north, the dike on the north end of the property?
The, the north end would be right at, uh, the flood stage. So it would be level with the site.
Lisa, you're muted.
Lisa, can you repeat that? Lisa?
You're muted, Lisa. Perhaps by accident.
Yes, indeed. I'm sitting here pushing the spacebar, having a nice conversation with myself. So, um, from what you just said, Mr. Day, it sounds like, um, it would drain from the north or from the south towards the north because that end, the dike is lower. Like,
No, not necessarily. If, if you were to flatten out that site completely level, you know, that's what it would do, but uh, the tendency would be to drain it from, uh, from east to west because that's where the drainage uh, needs to go to, to get out through our channel to the lake.
Okay. I just, I know that there's, um, it's possible to alter the land and make it buildable, but I didn't, I didn't want us to overlook any elevation change that would make it. We had to elevate it so high that it was actually impossible to keep it from draining into the neighborhood. So as long as that's feasible, that was my last question. Thanks.
Uh, also, Mr. Day, um, maybe without getting really technical, how hard would it be to serve a big development on, you know, either the north or south side here of Lakeview Parkway?
Uh, we, we have, we have water in Fifth West. We have sewer in Fifth West. In fact, our sewer left station is right on the very south end. One house in from Fifth West to the east. Um, and it would be quite easy to service it with both sewer and water. Uh, other than the logistics of getting under the parkway and such.
That sounds, that sounds really attractive to me. I mean, it seems like there are a lot of pieces that are already in place to, you know, maybe make something realistic.
Yeah, this particular, this particular piece um, is a little bit higher elevation and stuff to the west. Uh, that's, uh, south of the parkway. So the, the property owner, from what I understand, has, has got it, uh, classified as upland, so it's not wetland. Uh, and so it, 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 you know, lends development more than the stuff further west.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion, questions, anything? And because I didn't see any hands at least immediately, I, I think there are a few different options that we have at our disposal tonight. Um, there are two specific requests. There's the, the text amendment and the, the map amendment. Um, we could continue one or both of those. Um, in my mind, there's some merit in that idea from the perspective that we heard at least a few comments about, uh, the need maybe to change how the maximum height uh, in the text is handled. Um, also I wouldn't necessarily mind seeing a, a general plan amendment accompany the proposed map amendment. Um, although at the same time, like I said earlier, I personally wouldn't mind seeing the map amendment move forward. Um, we could also, uh, you know, make recommendations, I think, to move things forward, maybe conditioned upon some things being addressed. Uh, and as always, you know, recommending denial, that's an option, but I haven't necessarily heard that expressed. Uh, Commissioner Uriaga?
Okay, making sure that I'm not muted. Um, I really, really like this, um, proposal. I do, I, my legal background makes me a textualist and so I like to have things sort of locked down before we approve them. And so I would be, my personal, um, inclination would be to, um, continue both options with, um, the first one pending the heightened setback, uh, language adjustments and the second one, um, pending the development plan and map amendments. I, it's up to the staff how long it takes to do those things, but, um, I could see them coming back in two to four weeks and just sailing through because, uh, especially since the, the neighborhood does not have an issue. Um, as long as there's a setback, they're not really invested in that, um, low-density residential. That becomes a non-issue in my mind. Um, and they seem very happy with, as long as they're protected with this moving forward. Um, and so I, I feel good about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted to add to what Laurie said that, um, if we continued item number seven, um, for the zone change, I think that the another pending item would be that general plan amendment that, um, Mr. Mills said he would, he would bring forward. I just feel like we need to do things in the proper order and it's really not standard protocol to change a zone that doesn't align with the general plan or area plan. So that would, I think that would be a good order of things.
Thank you. We've heard a few different scenarios laid out there. Um, maybe, uh, as we wait to see if any other commissioners want to comment, um, does anybody from staff want to offer any thoughts on what, uh, either Commissioner Jensen or Commissioner Uriaga suggested? Maybe to talk about timing and?
No, I mean, Robert and I were kind of talking to each other, um, while, while some of this was going on. I, I, I don't think we have a problem taking, um, some time to kind of evaluate how we might address those and, uh, bringing this back to the planning commission.
I'd hope that it'd be able to be back on an agenda in a month. I could see because of maybe a noticing requirement, we couldn't do it sooner than that, but I would, I would hope that maybe the first meeting in March. Does that sound realistic?
Yes, very much so.
Any other comments, suggestions, concerns, anything at all?
Deborah Jensen.
Thanks, Deborah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would just encourage staff as well as, uh, economic development to work together and look at some of these, uh, case examples of what they consider to be good development versus what they don't want to see. Uh, as Mr. Gonzalez suggested, I think that's an excellent idea and it might, uh, help some decision-making in the process based on what they discover and the conversation we had this evening.
Great thoughts. Thank you. Back to Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Sorry, Deborah Jensen's, uh, comment reminded me that because this is citywide and there is another, um, interchange that has a, a few sections of the zone, uh, at Center Street. Make sure that any language that they decide to change would not push someone out of developing there because those parcels are not huge. They're smaller individual parcels and we want to make sure that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot with, with anything we change.
The, the, Lisa, the la- the language is specific to frontage along Lakeview Parkway, the changes that, that we proposed, so.
Okay. I didn't know if you were going to make any further changes based on discussion today. I just wanted to make sure we kept that in mind that we don't want it to hurt the other areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Uriaga?
Uh, yes, I'm prepared to make a motion if, um, no one objects. Okay.
Please.
Seeing none, I will, um, I propose that we can I propose that we continue item six, the Community and Neighborhood Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to chapter 14 dot 20B of the Provo City Code to update development standards of the freeway commercial to FC two zone um with citywide impact. Um, and um requesting amendment of the um height and setback requirements um and any other textual revisions that would reflect the wishes of the um commission from our discussion tonight.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Okay, that was Commissioner Lisa Jensen. The motion is to continue item six. Any discussion on the motion? This seems really formal. I don't know if we need to do a roll call on this or not. Um getting no advice, I will proceed that way. I guess I'm seeing some nods. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaja?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Uh, once again, motion carries nine to zero.
Mr. Anderson, um, Mr. Mills put in the chat, he asked whether he wants, we want him to bring the language to us in a work meeting. So I don't know if we need to discuss how we want that to come to us.
Um, I would respond to say that um I'm not sure, I I would like to see the language. I'm not necessarily sure that if we had to schedule it in a work meeting in a month, then that would also delay the other thing. Um, bringing it back to the hearing for at least two more weeks beyond that, and I don't know that I feel that's necessary. Although having it available to look beforehand might be helpful. Unless, I don't know, can they do that in two weeks?
It that's kind of how I would I would respond. If the opportunity affords it, great. I don't think we're talking about such uh um uh complicated changes that we need necessarily spend a lot of time on it before a another hearing, but um Deborah Jensen, did you have something there? Sorry if I missed you.
No, no, I was just going to agree that I think if they could bring back any proposed revisions in two weeks at the next hearing and then we're ready to provide feedback on that at that time. And then two weeks after that, we can vote on it. I think that would work well.
I agree. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, I think we're down to item number seven.
I'm prepared to make a motion on that as well.
I think we're ready. Please go ahead.
Okay, um, I propose that we continue item number seven. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests a zone change from the A120 agricultural zone to the freeway commercial to FC two zone for approximately 75 acres located at approximately 500 West Lakeview, Lakeview Parkway in the Lakewood neighborhood. Um, and with the request of the commission that they bring back to a simultaneously um revisions to the general um and area maps and plans and um the development, necessary development um recommendations that go with those.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, thank you. That was Commissioner Henry with the second. Um, I'm going to start this way. Staff, do you have any questions about that motion? Particularly on the proposed area or general plan amendment?
Oh, fine.
Okay, any concerns with that, that?
No.
Okay. Great. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just would like to also ask um Lisa Jensen if um that covers what she had, what her concerns were. She's nodding. Okay.
I have the nod in case I accidentally can unmute myself.
Any other discussion on the motion? Great. Seeing no raised hands once again. I probably should go like reverse order once or something, but uh that's too complicated for me. So Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaja?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. I believe that concludes all of the business for the commission tonight. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss or anything else that staff has for the commission? Commissioner Jensen?
When would staff like to have our comments back from the study session prior to the hearing we had this evening?
As soon as possible. As soon as feasible.
Thank you.
Anything else? Feel free to jump in, including maybe with a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Now, I think I heard Commissioner Jones move to adjourn.
I will second that.
And Commissioner Urquiaja with a second. Does anybody object to adjourning? Great, we're adjourned. See everybody in a couple of weeks.
Good night.
Good discussion, everyone.